Good evening, everyone. My name is Yvette Woodruff. I'm the vice chair of the Policy Committee. I would like to call to order the Oakland County Network Committee of the whole meeting. Ms. Barrett, if you could take the roll call?
Sure.
Thank you.
Mr. Young?
Here.
Mr. Furman?
President.
Mr. Cowan?
President.
Mr. Torres, he notified me saying he's in route. Dr. Hans?
Here.
Ms. Newman?
Ms. Root?
Here.
Ms. May? She notified us of her absence tonight. Dr. Giles? Mr. Landsman? He also gave notification. And Ms. Woodruff?
Here.
So both committees have quorum at this point.
Okay. We need to approve the agenda. Is there a motion for approval?
Some motion. Support?
Okay. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Hearing none, the motion carries. We've come to our first opportunity for a public comment. Ms. Barrett, is there anyone in the room or online wishing to speak?
No comment at this time.
Okay. There will be a second opportunity during the course of the meeting for a public comment as well. I will now turn it over to the Finance Committee.
Thank you very much. Our first order of business for the Finance Committee is our monthly financial review by our CFO, Anya. The floor is yours. Or the ceiling, depending on how things are looking.
I was thinking, if you bring me the floor, we could do something far more exciting. Okay, so we're looking at February here. So we are now five months into the year. You can see revenue is staying pretty consistent at this point. Eligibility's flattened out quite a bit, but we're right about on par with what we were seeing last fiscal year. You want to switch to the next one? So this is eligibles, again tied to, this is how revenue is determined, is based on the number of eligibles. Again, flat at this point, very minimal increases we're seeing every month, and we will start to see that change when the Public Health Emergency ends later this year. So looking at assets, this is compared to the end of last fiscal year, so September 22. So our cash and investments is up by about $6 million or so. Receivables is down, that's typical as we go throughout the fiscal year, just given we do a lot of accruals at year-end. Other assets are roughly flat, and then capital assets continue to go down. Vendor payables, again, this is compared to the end of the fiscal year, is down since then. Again, same thing, year-end accruals happening and cost settlements being done, so those are down just under $10 million from the end of the fiscal year. Due to state is roughly the same, about $500,000 off, that's really primarily state facilities. Employee payables is slightly up due to the distribution of PTO accounts, and then long-term debt continues to go down each month. So total assets compared to the end of the fiscal year is down slightly, a couple million dollars. Total liabilities down even further, which results in a net position increase over the end of the fiscal year by about $8 million. So when we look at revenue, this is revenue compared to this time last fiscal year, our revenue is up by about $16 million in Medicaid. A large chunk of that is going to be related to CCBHC, and the other piece is really just going to be related to eligibles. Our rates haven't changed materially over the two fiscal years. State General Fund is only slightly different. It's just gone down slightly from the final adjustment related to the reallocating across the state of General Fund. We are now at our base, or where it's going to stay. County funds is the same, and then all other is up primarily related to grants. Expenses, again compared to this time last year, administration being up, just added physicians. Provider network expenses are up, again primarily due to CCBHC, but also due to increased expenses as well as increases to direct care wage funding. Grants are up, oh, sorry. Grants are up a bit from this time last year, and then all other is not terribly different. Total revenue is up by about $20 million compared to last fiscal year. Total expenses are up about $30, and so net income compared to this time last year is 7.6 or 7.7 million compared to last year was about 17. These are our 15 highest-paid providers for the month. And with that, I can take any questions.
Anya, I know you've been monitoring this, and we get more into the discussion while we talk about the budget amendment, but are any surprises or things, is this a continuation of what we've seen so far during this fiscal year?
Yep, no surprises yet. I think that, as you mentioned, we'll talk a little more about changes throughout the remainder of the fiscal year, but, you know, we're seeing expenses definitely higher than last fiscal year, and have some mitigation strategies we're putting in place, especially prior to the end of the Public Health Emergency, which will affect our revenue. But nothing surprising that we weren't expecting and that we haven't been aware of, you know, the staffing challenges and whatnot that we've been experiencing.
Anyone else with any questions at this time? All right, then we'll move on to the second part of the Finance Committee's discussion, which is the proposed budget amendment two that Finance Department has put before us. So before we begin this presentation discussion, I did have an opportunity to talk with Anya and Dana and others at length this afternoon. John was part of that for a while also, because there are a lot of changes that are being proposed, or budget amendments, based upon what we're seeing as an organization with some of the payment trends, et cetera. So it is a little daunting, there's a lot of changes. Unfortunately, they're in what I call going-south direction in the red a little bit, but we do have, is going to be discussed, some mitigation strategies and some opportunities with the state that we can take advantage of to close that gap before the end of the year. So, go ahead with that preamble. The floor is yours.
Okay. So as Mr. Cowan mentioned, there's a lot going on in this budget amendment. There's some shifting of some categories, just to try to make things a little more transparent, just from a CCBHC perspective, and I'll talk you through each of those adjustments. But from a revenue perspective, Medicaid shows an increase of about $21.5 million. Primarily, that's related to the direct care wage funding that was approved by the legislature last year, and that is now becoming permanent and is included in our rates. So last fiscal year, we had that in a separate line, because it was paid separately. Now it's rolled into our regular capitation, so we've moved it to that line item. So Medicaid waiver is specifically children's waiver, and you can see that's gone up a bit, again, just an adjustment of what we're seeing year-to-date. COVID premium pay, so that is going to be what I referenced just a second ago, was related to the premium pay, the 235 that was approved, has now become permanent and part of our Medicaid Specialty Managed Care Funding. The reason it is not a one-to-one match there, you see that slight difference, is because we took the Medicaid revenue year-to-date, and then the remainder of the fiscal year eligibility trend, and updated the Medicaid eligibility, so that's really the net of those two things, is the $21 million. The next line item is Healthy Michigan, and so that's really the category where we're still seeing increased eligibles. It's flattened out quite significantly for Medicaid, but Healthy Michigan still continues to see an increase, and so that's why, again, year-to-date, we've looked at the revenue received, and then projected that for the remainder of the fiscal year, which shows roughly the $6 million increase, but also that has to do with that premium pay as well that does hit Healthy Michigan. So CCBHC supplemental, so there's a portion of CCBHC money that comes from our capitation, and then there's a portion that is considered the add-on supplemental, and that portion is what you're seeing in that particular line item, and that's just being adjusted based on year-to-date experience, and then projecting that out for the rest of the fiscal year. So there's really two pieces to the revenue we receive for CCBHC. It's part of our base capitation, and then also that supplemental piece that fills in the remainder of the rate the CCBHCs receive. So that's a total increase of about $2.3 million from the last budget amendment. No change in the state funding. Other funding, slight adjustment to grants, a more material adjustment to SUD other, and so that's PA2 and block grant. So we received some funding from block grant for methadone rates that the legislature has identified a rate for, so the state has funded us for that, for the block grant portion of that. And then PA2, I'm sorry, the other piece of that is not PA2, it's actually an SUD COVID grant, so we've received some grant money for a COVID grant through the SUD Network. That totals about $2.5 million, so the total revenue adjustment is just under $4.2 million, bringing us to just under $460 million. Oh, hopefully I can read this from here. Okay, so now we're moving on to expenses. So system administration, there's a few positions added there to the budget, including some hospital liaisons and a supervisor position for our facility staff. Moving down to program and other expenses, you can see there's a couple of shifts going on here that make this a little more complicated than normal. We decided that in an effort to be as transparent as possible and clear about how CCBHC is really affecting our expenses, to pull the CCBHC expenses out from the core provider adults and core provider kids. And so what you see happening up there towards the top for core provider adults and for core provider kids are the net of a few things. So for core provider adults, we've removed the CCBHC expenses from there, and then taken the remainder and project that out for the remainder of the fiscal year. So that's that $1 million increase. Crisis and acute care services, there's two adjustments happening there. One of them is the remaining 12 hours for the mobile crisis team at our crisis provider Common Ground. So when they have that team up and running for the second 12 hours, so we already funded for 12 hours, this is for the remaining 12 hours, we have added funding for that. And then the other piece that's happening in crisis and acute care is the HRA adjustment. And HRA stands for Hospital Rate Adjuster. It's an amount that's determined by the state and funded directly by the state for each day that's utilized in a crisis acute care setting. So they look at the prior year, prior quarter's data, and then fund us, I think it's $309 off the top of my head, per day utilized, and then we push that directly through to those hospitals. So our utilization of hospitals has gone up over the past fiscal year, so this is the catch-up adjustment for that HRA payment to be representative of what we're actually receiving now. So core provider kids, again, that's an adjustment related to pulling out the CCBHC-related expenses, and then taking the current providers and projecting them for the remainder of the fiscal year. The substance use line there, the $1.6 million, is the projected expense for both of the items I mentioned above, both the methadone rate adjustment as well as the grant I mentioned. The other $74,000 is a new grant we received. And then for the lower portion, vocational and residential, there are a couple things going on there. If you recall, you all approved for us to adjust direct care wages to be funded at $16 an hour, so that's the adjustment for that from January forward. In addition to that, that's us taking the year-to-date utilization and projecting it for the remainder of the fiscal year. So, and I'm going to get to, when I get to the bottom line, I'll talk a little about, a bit about some additional adjustments we're making in those areas to kind of try to get everybody back to normal as the PHE is ending, and as we have to look at, you know, the rates that have gone up for the direct care wage staff compared to when we started the Public Health Emergency, and how to kind of gain a little more control over the expenses for that network, because you can see we're up to $129, almost $130 million, and that's an increase of about $23 million from fiscal year '21. So a pretty significant increase, and we did verify that's really not utilization difference, it's cost difference. So, moving on to behavioral health home case rate, so with increased utilization, there's increased expense. Again, that one is funded specifically by the state based on utilization, so other than an administrative fee we get, it's a pass-through, and we just oversee the kind of the managed care function of that program as well. And then you can see down here, the CCBHC line item now represents the full CCBHC expense. So we're projecting for the remainder of the fiscal year, the full expense will be about $67 million. So this program has grown pretty significantly over the last, now this is just, we're just a year and a half in at this point, so it's grown quite considerably during that time to $67 million, and about, I think it's about a 90-10 split between what comes from our capitation, so our normal funding, and what comes from the supplemental funding. So a large chunk of that does come from our general Medicaid funding. So, that all amounts to about a $12 million change in net assets, and puts us at about an $8.9 million deficit should spending continue at that rate. So that's not a fun place to be for any finance person sitting in front of you. So, a couple things we did start to put in place to try to mitigate some of that overage, and try to gain some control over the expenses, given not only that we're projecting to be overspent, but we're also facing the end of the Public Health Emergency, which very likely will have an impact on our revenue. One of those things is we've taken in the management and the negotiation of single-case agreements for our inpatient psychiatric utilization. So that, prior to now, that had been handled at one of our providers, and given the trends we're seeing with the rates being utilized there, it's become apparent that we need to handle that in-house, and have a pretty strenuous review process associated with adjustments outside of the standard hospital rate. So the other fairly large mitigation strategy we've put in place, many of you've heard me talk about cost reimbursement, and how we moved to cost reimbursement during the pandemic, and what that did for providers from a stability perspective, which was expected of us from the department, and it really made it so that providers could focus on serving people and less about cash flow. But with the PHE ending, the timing was necessary for us to end that type of funding, so now they go back to their normal funding structure, where in a residential setting, for example, they get paid their per diem rate for each individual they serve, and they are allowed to keep a profit, it's limited at 2%. They're also able to receive incentive payments should they meet those incentive benchmarks. And then what happens, though, is that there is no guaranteed coverage of any overages. But what I will say to that is that when the pandemic started, our direct care wage rates were $11.43. We're now at $16. So it's come up quite a bit, and so the point of moving to $16 in January, and then the cost reimburse funding ending in April, was really to kind of get ahead of some of the overtime and some of the turnover. You'll start to see now with some of the job market starting to change, you're starting to see layoffs and things like that, that should help us from a staffing perspective. It may take a while to kind of funnel through, but we should start to see less turnover, and we are able now to pay, on average, $16 an hour, which is what they're funded at. So that means that someone could start at 12, but others could be, that have a little more longevity, could be at $18 or $20 an hour, depending on the situation. So once they receive the money, it is up to their discretion to how they pay their staff and how they manage that. We are just very transparent and clear on what we funded at. And so part of the mitigation strategy related to that roughly $9 million deficit is that if a provider feels like they cannot make ends meet and they have significant overages, they can still reach out to us, and they would have to provide rationale and data to support any overages that would then have to be approved at the leadership level to be received. So the hope being that by them getting in front of it, being able to pay a little more, that we'll see some reduction in overtime, some reduction in turnover, and hopefully rein in some of these costs a little bit, just because it's really, it's become, you know, like I said, we spent an additional $23 million not on utilization last year, it was entirely on cost. So between those two mitigation strategies, in addition to the fact that we do have a meeting with the department on April 19th to discuss rates. So one of the things the PHPs have asked for with the end of the Public Health Emergency is for them to look at rates and adjust rates accordingly sooner rather than later. So because there will be people that fall off Medicaid, we have asked that they consider adjusting the rates within the fiscal year to account for that. And so I know they've also gotten pressure from several other areas to do so, so we have a meeting to discuss that, and my hope is that they will go ahead and preemptively adjust those rates, considering we will have a reduction in the number of people eligible. So we'll be watching very close how this is looking each month, and with the utilization trends and with the expenses. The other piece is vocational will be ending there, cost reimbursement, but not until the end of the fiscal year, because we will be sitting down with them to discuss the rate structure, because they're saying they still have enough no-shows and turnover and staffing issues that the rate structure, they don't believe will be sustainable for their organization. So we have, I think, bimonthly meetings set up with them the remainder of the fiscal year to kind of explore some of that and see if an adjustment to the rate methodology is necessary. So all of that to say, it is projected to be a deficit budget. We do have unrestricted and PA2 funds that could cover it if necessary. That is not the goal, but we have put some mitigation strategies in place to try to rein that in a bit, and that will be kind of our goal for the next few months, is to try to really start to see evidence of that happening, to make sure that additional items don't need to be adjusted.
Well, we covered the good, the bad, and the ugly. So, does anybody have any questions? Christina?
You mentioned a strategy of bringing something in-house, that was about inpatient. Could you explain that a little more?
Yep, so we have standard inpatient rates for all of our contracted hospitals, so it's consistent rate across the board, for the most part. I think there are a couple of outliers. But what happens is, is if we cannot find a placement for an individual, previously we had given the authority to a provider to negotiate rates on our behalf to get those individuals in a hospital. And so what we've seen is the utilization of that has gone up pretty significantly. And so we've brought that function back in-house in order to make sure that we are scrutinizing each of those situations and making sure they require that level of rate. In addition to that, we've put in their contracts directly a one-to-one rate in the hospital, or two-to-one rate in the hospital, so that those things are predetermined. And so it's less, you're negotiating less often, because that way it's just standard rates, which leaves less wiggle room. So we've already agreed to these rates, so have they.
But we don't see this negatively impacting the outcomes for the individuals, right?
No, so it'll, the individuals will still get placed, it will just go through our internal staff to make sure that it's getting the right, either one-to-one rate, two-to-one rate, or if necessary, something else.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Yep.
Good question. Piggybacking on what Christina was asking about, so the $309 a day rate, those other rates are in addition to that?
Yes. Yep, so that's the rate that the state requires us to pass through directly to them. I like to call it part of the rate, because from my perspective it is. So that goes on top of the rate we have listed in their contract as their base rate.
Got you. Thank you.
Anya, in, you know, listening earlier today, and then this explanation, so is part of this due, is it somewhat of a transition out of the Public Health Emergency? And dollars, you know, significant dollar increases are now going to decline, but, you know, we do have the providers, because we're still, administratively, we're still at a 5% overhead, which I think is fantastic, so for the amount of money that we go through the system. So, and expenses always tend to drag along a little bit more. So is some of this due to this transition that we're having, both in the funding? I mean, the services still have to be provided, so it's really, this is the question of the funding and what's happening in the funding world, so.
Yes, so because we're funded based on the number of people who are eligible in Oakland County, so, you know, in the times when, let's say, for example, during the pandemic, when the number of people eligible goes up significantly, when they, the actuary, for example, says, okay, it costs $100 million for you to serve this population, because we're paid based on the number of people eligible, that means they're dividing by a hundred, like, a higher number of people that are eligible, whereas now with the Public Health Emergency ending, that number, the denominator, is going to get smaller. So it's basically dividing by a different number, because our costs don't really change specifically. We'll still serve the same number of people we would have served, most likely, there could be some shifting in there. But it's really about making the funding mechanism match the fact that we're funded in a way that is not equal to the way we serve people. So they have to adjust the rates accordingly. So as we exit this Public Health Emergency, our eligibles should go back to a place where it used to be, closer to where it used to be, I mean, I'm sure we won't lose everyone, but it will go back to a more normal rate, whereas because of the Public Health Emergency, it was significantly higher than we'd ever seen it. I think we're pushing $200,000 a month at this point, whereas historically it's been closer to 150, 120, somewhere down there. So we've gained quite a few people, and so they have to basically adjust the formula of how they fund us, because our costs don't really change because of the end of the PHE. It's really that the amount we're funded for each person needs to change.
So, it's, the, kind of another issue is, we haven't, the budget this year didn't vastly expand our administrative expense in any way, shape, or form, that was very tight. I mean, we did have a couple of new positions, but in an organization this big, that's not that many, there was a handful of new positions, so. So for the, just for the committee, as well as for the board, the kind of options, as I see it, is we have about a, this is about 2% of revenue, okay? Which normally is always very manageable, because anybody in their household budget or any budget could belt tighten 2%. However, we are six months through the fiscal year, and we do have, as you pointed out, we have a lot of funds that are restricted, even in this budget. It's not like we just have a lot of loose cash lying around that we can handle. And I believe earlier today, we talked about the fact that historically, the network has not done as maybe some other networks have done, and simply said to the providers, we're cutting your reimbursement rate, good luck. So that's not the way we've rolled, I think, historically. So, as I see it, the game plan right now is to employ the mitigation strategies, monitor those very carefully, keep an eye on the administrative spending, if there's things that we... If there's things that we can defer slightly until we get a better handle of this, maybe those should be deferred. And then if push comes to shove, at the end of the day, we do have money in our unrestricted funds, which is basically the fund balance is what another name for I call always call it savings account, which we don't want to do. So what this also does parallel to this is I know we're coming up on budgeting season pretty soon. So we have to kind of keep this in mind. And so I guess one of the questions I had also is, is this it or do we see this? I mean, you have methods to contract this, but is there a possibility that it could get worse?
So a lot of
I mean, realistically, I'm just conservatively.
Yep. So a lot of this hinges on how the state handles this. So the fact that we do have rate-setting meetings scheduled is good because the sooner they can kind of start to inform us on how they're going to handle adjustments related to the end of the PHE because that's right now, you know, there's always a handful of unknowns that we're dealing with when it comes to rates for this public mental health system. CCBHC is now a huge, a huge piece of that. But on top of that, we're ending a public health emergency that none of us have ever been through before. So having a better understanding where the state sits on how they expect to handle that and as we hear how the legislature is starting to look at twenty-four, so all of those pieces are the pieces we start to pull in to better understand what next year looks like. And so we will usually about June, start to draft some things based on the things we're hearing here and there, based on how we're currently spending. At that point, we should have a slight understanding of what going back to regular funding for those residential providers looks like, what the hospital adjustments are starting to look like, what we're starting to see from those things. So those are all the pieces that kind of start to inform the budget. And as those things become more clear, again, with the state starting to say, okay, this is how we're going to start to employ adjusting your rates for the PHE and this is what we're hearing from other places as it relates to funding for the fiscal year twenty-four. We'll start to pull together a very draft budget and then continue to refine it until we bring it to you guys. So to short that's a really long way for to say, I don't know.
Okay.
You know, we haven't been through the end of a PHE before. Honestly, I don't know. That's kind of why I say us keeping on it and every month I run budget to actual to see really what's happening versus what we've budgeted because I manage to budget. So I need to know where we're at based on how things are currently spending and then project that out to know where we're going to land. And then that informs future years. So with the public health emergency ending, not only are we doing our own mitigation strategies, but you know, we've also we're planning to send out lists of individuals that will be coming off of Medicaid or renewal date by month to the providers or creating a dashboard so they can see it so that people can preemptively re-enroll people. Because the last thing we want is people to lose their Medicaid, not only for them, of course, but from a funding perspective. And that's not just not just us, it's the behavioral health system. This matters for their physical healthcare as well. So, you know, we've got lots of pieces in play to try to offset these things, but having never been through this exact scenario, that's why I say I don't know. And so the best defense for us is to start to put some mitigation strategies in place to watch it as close as we can and to continue to report out to you guys of what we're seeing so that we can make some decisions together.
Right. And I think you've pointed out one key piece of information that we'll know in ten days or so, at least preliminarily, you know. They're not going to walk in the meeting and tell us.
I mean, if they want to walk in and hand us a fifty, sixty million, I'd be thrilled.
Yeah, I'm sure that's not going to happen. The Easter bunny came yesterday. It's not coming in ten days. Yeah. So I think that's a key piece of information we need. So I think the best way to describe what we're going through right now is if you're on an airplane flight, we're experiencing a little bit of turbulence. Now, whether it's smooth out is a little bit unknown because we don't know exactly what the weather pattern is yet, but we're going to find out pretty shortly.
Yep.
And we've got good pilots in place to adjust.
Yep.
So I wouldn't, you know, and I don't advocate at all doing anything rash, you know, like, you know, cutting reimbursement or slashing this or slashing this. I'd rather see us have a have some kind of plan. And I think we have a preliminary plan that you've proposed. And we have a backup plan, which we don't want to go to, which is tapping into the reserves or the fund balance. So that's kind of from my perspective, you know, big picture, kind of looking at this. And we'll just have to we have to ride it out a little bit until we get some more information and then we'll know, you know, how the mitigation strategies are working. It's probably going to take, you know, this month and next month to kind of get a handle on that.
Yep.
Okay? Yes. Yeah, Paul.
What's our current fund balance right now, the percentage?
Well, so we have roughly I'm going to say it differently only because it's different fund sources and they have to be used differently. So we have about twenty-four million in unrestricted fund balance and about thirteen point two or thirteen point three in PA two.
Twenty-four million unrestricted and okay, thirteen point two.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
One more thing. So I'll ask for if there's no further discussion, but I want to ask for a motion from the committee to the board. But I would ask that along with that for the board meeting, if you could put together just because we don't have everybody here, if you could put together just a one-pager on the major items of shifting and then most importantly, the mitigation strategies just so, you know, everybody is prepared. And also that might help with the meeting that we have next Tuesday, so.
Yeah. And I can also, you know, as I bring you financials each month, kind of maybe update you a little bit on how to look at that in the financials a little more specifically, just so you all can see as well kind of how those are how those are playing out.
All right. Well, I want to first, you know, thank you for giving it to us straight because we're a public entity. We have to be transparent and if those are the numbers, those are the numbers. And we'll just have to deal with it in any turbulence or smooth flight as we move forward. So is there any other questions? If there are none, I'll ask the committee for a motion to.
I'll move to recommend budget amendment two to the full board.
Mr. Furman?
Yep.
Oh, wait, do we have a second?
Do we get a second?
Second.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Furman?
Yes.
Mr. Torres?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
And Mr. Cowan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And with that, the finance committee's portion of the meeting is ended and I will turn it back over. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have the corporate compliance update. Ms. Massey and Mr. Hooper.
Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. If we could move back to the first slide. We are here this evening to present to you highlights of compliance activity that happened in quarter one of fiscal year twenty-three. Our updates to the board will align with the reporting timeframes that we have to submit to the MDHHS OIG. So for quarter one, the reporting was due to the state on February the fifteenth. The next quarter reporting will be due April the fifteenth, then July the fifteenth, and then the last would be October the fifteenth. We can move to the next slide. So here on this slide, we have an overview of the requirements that are outlined in our contract with the state that we have to have in our compliance program. We've talked about these items in the past, but just as a reminder, we have to have written policies, a code of conduct, compliance officer and oversight, training and education, reporting hotline, monitoring, auditing, and internal reporting, processes for non-retaliation and non-intimidation, and processes for conducting investigations and remediation, and then disciplinary policies. That last bullet that you see here on this slide is just a note to direct the board or any interested stakeholder to where they would find our hotline reporting form on our website. That's available for any member of the public, anybody with any concerns. We can move to the next slide. This is what the form looks like. This is just a snippet of the first section of the form. Here, we ask for anybody that's reporting any type of a concern that they may have just to give us the information that they feel comfortable with, their name, what is the incident, where did it occur, who are the individuals involved. Persons do have the opportunity to remain anonymous when they make a report. Of course, if an individual does decide that they want to be anonymous, we if there are follow-up questions that have to be answered, we would not be able to do that. So we encourage folks to please provide that information. Of course, once that information is received here, we would keep that confidential. We would not disclose that unless it was absolutely necessary. Move to the next slide. So how do we meet the required elements that are required to be in a compliance program? Of course, we have our compliance policy that is available in Policy Stat. All of the providers in our network have access to the Policy Stat. Board members also have access to that. We also have staff within OCHN that are assigned the primary responsibility for investigating any reported issues, monitoring network activities, and ensuring staff training. We also have requirements for staff training on an annual basis and for the board to also have training. If there are issues with a staff member that there may have been occasions of a repeated instance related to a compliance, we may require that that staff person go back in and complete the training again. We also have several reporting sources. We have the compliance hotline that I just spoke to you about. That compliance hotline, that form when completed is sent to a dedicated email that is received here at OCHN by all the staff here that are on our compliance committee. We also have a contract language that has been implemented into our provider contracts. And for our staff here internally, we have an intranet reporting form that staff can complete and fill out. We have reports available in Power BI that we use to monitor claims and data that's been submitted. We have a quarterly compliance committee meeting where we review issues reported during the quarter, discuss corrective action. Members sitting around the table can provide additional feedback, additional viewpoints that we need to consider, and ask any additional questions that anyone may have. When disciplinary actions are needed for any type of compliance issue, if it pertains to a staff member here at OCHN, our human resource department is involved and consulted with. We also issue corrective action plans as needed. And last item here on this is the quarterly reporting that we have to submit to the state office of inspector general. That's a requirement in our contract. This slide is just an overview of the activity that has happened, that occurred in the first quarter. The first two items are first two areas are reporting areas that we have to submit to the OIG. The last item on this slide here is an item that we track here internally for corrective action plans and also for training and education to staff. And then we are also required to report any privacy breaches to the Department of Health and Human Services Office of Civil Rights on an annual basis. So even though we don't have to report this to the state's OIG office, we still track that here because we do have to have that mechanism to be able to track that kind of data here. So in this quarter, the instances, as I mentioned, fell into these categories here. This is for quarter one. In terms of the category of tips and grievances, we had several instances of supports coordinators reporting concerns to us pertaining to staff not providing services as authorized. So when anything like that happens, we conduct an investigation. If it turns out to be a substantiated issue, then of course, claims would be recouped. The claims are voided in our system, corrective action plans are implemented, and the staff that is involved in the issue is most likely released from employment if it turns out to be a substantiated issue. There was also an issue reported by a person served that their therapy sessions were not lasting the required time. So this person served reported his concern to another individual at that provider agency. An investigation was conducted and that turned out to be a substantiated claim. And category of data mining, what data mining pertains to is post-payment activity where you review claims to look at any type of impossibility scenarios. So we have Power BI reports that we utilize for this purpose that our IT staff has built. An example would be a claim being reported for residential services while a person was in the hospital. That, of course, couldn't happen when that the Power BI reports are designed to be able to detect that sort of activity. When that happens, it doesn't happen very often. We implemented this process probably about three or four years ago. Before that, it may have happened more frequently, but we've been communicating with our provider network and issuing corrective action plans when these kind of issues occur and recouping the funds for any invalid claims. The last reporting category in here that I wanted to briefly talk about pertains to HIPAA security and privacy. Just a couple of issues here that I want to speak about. We had a staff member that lost their device. The action taken was to by our staff and IT was to remotely wipe that device so if the device was ever turned back on, the user would whoever had that device would not be able to detect anything on it. And then the last item on here was an issue with PHI that was sent unencrypted. And in this particular instance, a staff member sent the PHI to an area where it was identified as spam. So there really wasn't a breach that occurred with that. So I am going to stop now to see if anybody has any questions or if you want to add anything, Mr. Hooper.
So first of all, thank you. As you can see, Marquita is extremely detailed and she keeps an outstanding record of all of these kinds of incidents. The only thing I would like to point out is that the first activity type, like tips and grievances, there are actually four categories that we monitor on a quarterly basis that we actually report to the MDHHS Office of Inspector General. And within those categories, we often may or may not have violations that we would report. However, the reports are actually scrutinized by the individuals that are responsible for our organization. And so they may ask or request for comments or revisions to the report if there are things that they see that they believe should otherwise be revised. Probably the most difficult area Probably the most difficult area is the area of data mining. As Ms. Massey pointed out, the data mining concept is for things that are impossible. It could also be for things that are possible but highly unlikely and that you're identifying and you can investigate. So, there are frequently examples of overlapping billing, which is a common thing where two people have billed for the same time period. There's my personal favorite, which is provision of service to someone post their date of death, which you can always find, but happens pretty regularly. And there are a few other categories that sort of stand out equally as well. And as she pointed out, there is the hospitalization while otherwise, and billing while people are otherwise in hospitalization. So, that can cross a number of different types of providers, CLS providers, RASPID providers, et cetera. So, those are the things that I wanted to talk about with respect to the reporting categories. I also wanted to go back and talk a little bit about the hotline and the form. The form is a critical component of what we have to have in our compliance plan. However, the challenge that we often face is that if a complaint comes in and that complaint is anonymous, then when we do need to ask questions, and that is often, we don't have any further to go in the investigation. We don't have a direction to go. We received, for example, a very significant complaint recently. The person told us the provider, but they didn't tell us any information regarding the individuals who committed the violation, the date of the violation, the person served who was involved. And so, it was really a needle in a haystack to try to find what we were looking for. And if we'd had just a little bit more information, we could have found what we were looking for and either substantiated the claim or found that the claim wasn't valid. So, that's one of the kinds of examples where we have a challenge. But in all instances, when those reports come in, within relatively short order, they are recorded on a spreadsheet that captures every violation or every report of a violation. And everyone on the committee, as Ms. Massey has alluded to, will see that.
So, we can move to the next slide. So, what you have here is just the year at a glance. This is activity that has been reported to us for fiscal year '22. You can see from the scratch that in fiscal year '22, the category that had the highest number of issues reported pertain to overpayments and improper billing. So, what that, an example of that would be if you have a direct care staff that reported that he or she provided CLS to an individual, and that didn't happen. The person was, the direct care worker may have been sitting in their car, not providing service, something like that. Those are the kind of things that are reported to us, and we have to investigate those. The next group of items that was the next highest pertain to HIPAA issues. So, if you look at the column, it's called HIPAA Privacy, HIPAA Security, and Other Password Violations, Login Sharing. Collectively, that comes to about 15 issues within the year. That happened more than we would like. Our staff here internally, they're very good about self-reporting on themselves. I think that is a tribute to the training that staff receive here. When something like that happens, the staff person supervisor is asked to speak with the staff and counsel them to make sure that they're aware of what our role is in regards to protecting protected health information and that any, we have access to this information, but if we're using the information, we have to be sure that we, if we're emailing anything, we have to be sure that we are using secure email. In instances where a staff person may have had repeated instances of this, this would be an example where the staff person would be asked to complete, to go through training again. The next group that I want to highlight for you is the category of fraudulent documentation. Couple of examples that fell into this category. There was an instance of a guardian of a person served receiving payments for services that were not appropriate. We also talked about, Mr. Hooper talked about services being billed after death. And we also had an instance of a staff person reporting claims from two different residential service sites occurring at the same time, which of course is impossible. So, when those kind of things happen, as I mentioned, there's a recruitment of funds, corrective action plans, and education provided to the staff persons and to the person served. Let's see. And the last item on here pertained to ethics integrity. We had a couple of reports that had been made to us through our Customer Services Department, inquiries from provider staff about the wage pass-through. Staff were concerned about not receiving that, the wage pass-through. So, when those kind of complaints happen, we have to request payroll records from the provider, timesheets. That information is shared with our finance area, and an audit is completed to determine if the documentation supports that the wage increases were actually passed through to the individual served. Can move to the next slide. So, what do we do when, with all these types of issues that come across our desk? What kind of prevention controls have we implemented? So, we have some EMR controls in ODIN that prevents staff persons from reporting services that have occurred at the same time. That's one example. We also have controls in ODIN that is tied to the specific procedure code that requires that only certain professional types can actually submit a claim for that service. I talked a little bit about provider and staff education that we complete within the network. We also are utilizing the Michigan Consumer Evaluation Team to conduct telehealth post-service surveys where they are calling individuals served, asking, confirming that they actually received a service. Was it their choice to receive the service via telemet? How long did it last, and were they satisfied? We are also continuing to do training verification audits. We have to ensure that the staff out in the network that are providing direct services, that those individuals have completed their required training. That's something that we have to do. If it's determined that training has not been completed, the staff person really isn't qualified to provide the service. So, that would be an instance where there would be a recruitment needed from, in regards to those services. I'm going to stop now to see if you have anything you want to add, Bernard.
The only thing I wanted to add is to talk briefly about the training verification and audits. Right now, we are working in the training department. I work along with Dr. Pozio. Dr. Pozio is responsible for training generally throughout the entire organization. One of the things that we are doing is we're making a transition of our live training services from an outside third-party vendor in-house. So, that is going to also come with new material that we will have to develop or that we will get from another third party, as well as to new employees to go along with that training and verification. So, ultimately, the training and verification part will become clearer to us because we will be holding all of the training records for all of the people who are in our network or have access to it. So, it should be pretty clear whether an individual, before we actually go out to audit the location, has actually completed their training. So, we will know all those dates.
So, let's move to the next slide. More on actions that we've taken. We continue to train staff and provide additional coaching to staff on their role in the protection of protected health information. We are doing quarterly updates at our general staff meeting, just basically reminding staff, this is what you should do if an issue occurs, where you need to report it, and what our responsibilities are for protecting this information. We are, we've increased the volume of our billing verification checks. We are required to complete these audits annually by the state. And over the years, we've increased the number of claim lines that we are reviewing as a result of this audit. We've contracted out with a new vendor about a year and a half ago to be able to conduct this so that we would be able to expand the volume of claims that we reviewed. Also, we are increasing awareness, working to increase awareness of our hotline. So, we're doing that with our providers at quarterly provider meetings and also with our staff here. We continue to educate our provider network on the kind of issues that are coming across our desk because we know that out there in the network, they're seeing items also. And they are required to report instances that, per contract, they're required to report instances that they discover to us within 48 hours. And the last bullet on here talks about penalties for repeat citations. So, what that would be is if we had a provider that we issued a corrective action, request for corrective action on once for misappropriate billing, and the explanation that was provided in the cap seemed to be a reasonable explanation, and they outlined steps they were going to take to prevent these kind of issues from happening again. When a cap is received, we have to approve it here. And when we approve it, our expectation is that we won't see these kind of issues happen again in the future. Well, if we see a repeated instance of this type of an issue, that means that obviously something's wrong with the cap. Something didn't work as it should have been. So, when that sort of issue happens, we have issued sanctions to the providers in regards to that. That type of sanction, an example of that could be a referral moratorium, which would mean a provider is not eligible to receive any new referrals for, from individuals served. So, those actions have been effective. We keep, we learn new things every day. We hear new things that need to be addressed every day. I think that our hotline gives us some very good information on areas that we need to focus on. We also get information from the Office of Recipient Rights. Sometimes, an issue comes across their desk that it's a rights, a rights issue, but it's also a compliance issue. So, there's really no wrong door when issues are reported, and we don't want individuals to try to filter out and think about, should I report here, should I report there? It doesn't matter, just report it, and we'll make sure it gets into the right place for having it addressed. Can move to the next slide. Okay, that's the end. I think we're available for any questions now.
So, you did answer my question that I had about corrective action. So, my other question was on the pass-through. Have we substantiated that? I've heard that here and there, and it comes up. But I know you say that you guys investigate and audit. So, have we ever substantiated where the pass-through didn't go through?
No, on the issues that have been reported to us based on the payroll documentation and the timesheets that have been submitted, we were not able to substantiate it. But if, you know, board members are out in the community and you come across a complaint, we would encourage you to direct persons to the hotline, so hotline form, so that we could further investigate.
And that was included in the other, is that correct, in the four?
That was included in the other, yes.
Thank you.
Now, with respect to, with respect to certain pass-through payments, we were informed by a former board member of a circumstance where providers of direct care to individuals with ADD, so they were self-determined, they were not receiving information regarding the actual, the bonus programs. So, as a result of that, Anya and I worked aggressively to identify who had not received those payments, and we made sure that those payments and information was passed through to them. Because at that time, currently, they, those providers report up to our provider network and not directly to us. So, they get their information from the provider network and not directly from us. So, we've made some modifications in order to make sure that we won't have that problem again.
Thank you.
Dr. Huns?
Yeah, my question is about the fraudulent documentation. So, is it on the timesheets, or is it actual services provided to the citizens?
In the case that I reported on, it was an instance where the guardian of a person served, I don't want to divulge too much information, but the guardian of a person served misrepresented themselves in order to get payment for services.
Okay, so that would be like, so it has nothing to do with improper coding and things like that?
No. This resulted in payments being made to the guardian, where the guardian wasn't providing services.
The services, okay. Yeah, that would be quite serious. So, then how does that person receive the services? I mean, guardian is still in charge of all the decision-making. Obviously, the person is not self-determined. So, it's kind of is very worrisome that...
It would be a case where you have two parties working in cahoots, basically.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry. To be fair, we talked about the vendor, the third-party vendor that we're using. They conduct what's called Medicaid Claims Verification. That process, actually, we're expanding the number of claims that we're reviewing. And that is going to be a random selection of claims at a number that is statistically valid for the aggregate of claims that we receive. And oftentimes, that will capture trends or circumstances where those kinds of things happen. There are also times when providers and fiscal intermediaries will review timesheets in order to determine whether those timesheets appear to be valid or not because they are obligated to do so as well under the contract. they are obligated to do so as well under the contract. And it is, it is, you are correct. There are, there are different circumstances of fraud. So there are fraudulent examples in the progress notes. There could be fraudulent examples for billing services that didn't occur. There could be fraudulent examples for codes billed where, for example, one code requires the services provided by two people. There are some autism codes like that. And there may or may not be backup to substantiate that two people in fact provided that service. So there are a number of different categories. We in a num, and we in various different ways find out about those things. Oftentimes, we have people report them. It's usually only in the circumstances where you have a guardian do you actually need a third party to have audited what they, what they claim they did in order to know that. So that's, that's usually the, the most difficult to find.
Yes, it, it is quite worrisome because most people would not even know that services are not being provided or inadequately provided or wrongly billed. So everyone except for the person who pockets the money is a loser, losing in this whole thing. My second question is about training, the, the, the training. It seems that the direct care professionals are the key to all of, for the services to be rendered in a, in a way that they should be. So the monitoring of their training is done here or is it done by the core providers?
The monitoring of their training will be done here. It's not currently being done here, but that is what we're going to be doing. Once we have the information here in-house, as Benard mentioned, we'll have ready access to that information. So as part of their training curriculum, they have to take a corporate compliance training. So all the direct care staff are aware of what's appropriate to bill and what they shouldn't bill. So training is very important. Until we do bring that information in-house, we are conducting, we'll be conducting random audits on a set of providers periodically.
And is there a timeline as to when this transition will be completed?
I think it's FY '24, isn't it?
Yes. We, we initially targeted for the fourth quarter of this fiscal year. We've had some challenges, primarily because there is new content that needs to be developed. We also have lost some staff that, in key positions. So we're looking, for example, for a new LMS manager that will support the transition as well. And we're looking for individuals that can provide live trainings, and they have to have certain qualifications, primarily nursing qualifications. So there, there, there are some things that are, that are key to the transition, but we are looking to have that all completed by the end of this fiscal year. We had training outsourced to two different providers. We've, we have completely eliminated one of those providers, so we only now are using one for a portion of the, of the training. We expect to have everything up and running by October 1st.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you for the concise report.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda. Suzanne Winard.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Suzanne Winard. I'm the Communications Director at OCHN, and I am happy to bring you the May is Mental Health Month proclamation. As you may remember, some of you newer board members, but we, each year, we put out the May is Mental Health Month proclamation recognizing Mental Health Month, and we call upon our government agencies as well as our school boards to promote mental health, re-engage mental health as an important issue in the community. And by doing that, we send out this proclamation that I'm going to be reading to you and ask them to present that at their monthly, either city, village, or township meeting, or their school board meeting, and accept that proclamation as something that they're going to push and recognize May is Mental Health Month. So if there are no other questions, I'll go ahead and read the proclamation to you. Okay. "Mental Health Awareness Month, May 2023. Whereas mental health includes our emotional, physical, psychological, and social well-being, it affects how we think, feel, and act. It also affects how we handle stress, relate to others, and make choices. And whereas mental health is important for our individual well-being and vitality, as well as that of our families, communities, and businesses. And whereas surroundings can impact how and when our individuals, individual needs are met, which affects mental health, and has, having stable, healthy home conditions establish a foundation for obtaining and maintaining good mental health. And whereas May 1st through May 31st, 2023, is recognized as Mental Health Awareness Month with a focus on supportive environments and the impact our physical surroundings have on individuals and population mental health. And whereas Oakland Community Health Network continues to inspire champions to address the social determinants of health impacting our communities. And whereas mental health recovery can not only benefit individuals with mental health disorders by focusing on their abilities to live, work, learn, and fully participate and contribute to our society, but also enriches the culture of our community life. And whereas improved systems of care for vulnerable populations, enhanced and expanded access to non-emergent and crisis services, advanced integrated physical and behavioral health care, collaborate provider relations, and strengthen workforce for identified priorities for OCHN. And whereas the Oakland Community Health Network, OCHN, and its service provider agencies are committed to inspiring hope, empowering people, and strengthening communities. Now therefore be it resolved that Oakland Community Health Network hereby recognizes May 2023 as Mental Health Awareness Month. OCHN calls upon our citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools to recommit our state to increasing awareness and understanding of mental illness, and the need for appropriate and accessible service for all people with mental illness to promote recovery and higher quality of life." Phew, that's a lot. A lot of really good information. And as mentioned, we send this out to our local cities, villages, and townships, as well as our school boards and Board of Commissioners. Typically, we get about 10 to 15 requests in the month of May to come out and accept those proclamations. We usually send representatives from staff who are in those communities so that they can go out and accept those proclamations, say a few words. Oftentimes, we also receive them in the mail. Sometimes they'll do the proclamations and they'll send us a documented, signed documentation of the proclamation. So it's a good representation of Mental Health Awareness Month and recognizing May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and it's a great way to engage our community and our cities, villages, and township school boards, and community and citizens in recognizing how important mental health is in our communities.
Is there any questions? Go ahead, Ms. Root.
Thank you. Thank you for reading all of this.
Of course.
So I just wanted to share, the second to the last paragraph from the bottom kind of confuses me a bit because it's in past tense, but then in the third sentence, collaborative provider relations, is it? I don't know, I don't know if it's just me, but I kind of got stuck reading it last night. Something just didn't flow. I don't know if anyone else...
Are there suggestions you would like to have changed?
Um, so, well, maybe could you explain it? So advanced integrated physical and behavioral health care, comma, collaborative provider relations. Like, what do we want that sentence to say?
We wanted to combine that, that overall well-being of combining the physical health with mental health, knowing that health is health, mental health is, is health as well. So collaborating and combining that along with that provider relations.
Okay, thank you. How about through, so advanced integrated physical and behavioral health care through provider relations or through collaborative provider relations?
Okay.
Collaborative, okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So is there a recommendation from the Policy Committee to move to the full board for approval?
I'll make the recommendation. Oh, I'll make that.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, Ms. Barrett.
Uh, Dr. Huns?
Yes.
Ms. Root?
Yes.
Ms. Woodruff?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much. I think I'll just stay.
[laughing].
All right, next, I'm going to go through our numerous lists of events and meetings that are coming up, so I'm going to go ahead and have you advance. There we go. Thank you so much. Just kind of a recap. Anya talked a little bit about the public health emergency ending. Just wanted to continue that conversation. We, OCHN has a work plan in, in place. We've developed the work plan, and we continue to keep information on our website. We've learned that the state is going to be sending out letters to individuals, and we are going to be continuing to work through our system, through Odin, to connect with individuals that receive these letters so that they know to pay attention to those letters and that that is something that they need to act upon. So continuing that process, just wanted to, wanted to give you a quick update about that. As you can see, numerous meetings were held last week with our, oop, go back one more, sorry. Provider CEO meeting, we had our faith-based meeting, but another event is the Michigan Chronicle had their annual honoree evening, and Kim Flowers, our very own Kim Flowers, was honored as a woman of excellence at that event. So that was quite an honor that she received this last week, so we're very proud of her. Also, as mentioned, just a few other meetings with senators that Dana and leadership have been meeting with numerous senators as well. Next slide. In addition to some additional meetings coming up with, there's a new deputy executive at the County Executive's Office, Medea Tariq, and we have a meeting scheduled with her. Dana has a meeting scheduled with her on the 13th, later this week, as well as the NAMI Honors Event is coming up on Saturday. So some really great events coming up for some fun black tie type of events. We also have, I mentioned this last month, our Autism Provider Showcase hosting that event here in the Michigan Room on the 25th. It's from 3 to 5. They will have a number of our autism providers in their room, and some families will be coming in and learning more about what services they have available. Also, we're very excited to report that we have well over 300 needs assessments already in our system. Some of those are, some of just individuals going and doing it online. So we'll encourage you, if you haven't done it already, please fill out our needs assessment. But also, paper copies, as I mentioned before, we do large mailing, so we've received a number of them back in the mail, probably about 100 have come through the mail, so very excited for that. As well as, we've been visiting a lot of clubhouses, myself included. Last week, I was at a number of clubhouses. Christine Burke has been going out, Frances Carley going out to our clubhouses and helping individuals fill out the, the survey right then and there, as well as our direct support professionals. We've gotten a few back from the clubhouses as well as in the mail. So like I said, we, we're, we're getting there, and we still have a couple more weeks left, so plenty of time to continue to get more feedback. So we're really excited about that. Also, as you know, our May is Mental Health Month initiative, I just presented on that. We have a number of our leadership going to the NatCon Conference coming up for a speak in May. And we have a number of sponsors, sponsorship events, breakfasts and things like that that are coming up. Those seem to be coming in like crazy lately. We're doing quite a few, attending, our staff are attending and representing OCHN at a lot of different events, like the Common Ground Legacy of Hope Breakfast, and I think there's a couple more listed as well. We have the Haven Wick 40th Anniversary event coming up on the 10th that staff will be attending. Also wanted to mention our Drive-Thru Resource Event. I may or may not have mentioned it at a previous meeting. We're holding that on, actually, the date of that is actually the 6th, May the 6th. I'm sorry about that. But we're holding a resource, Drive-Thru Resource Event where we're stuffing bags with a lot of resources, holding it in four quadrants around the county, one of them being a library, a church, as well as one of our providers, and then a clubhouse. So trying to hit the different quadrants of the county and provide resources about what our providers' resources as well as OCHN resources so that people have that information. We posted this in the past, and it was, it was a successful event, so we were trying to provide that information and offer that opportunity at this time on a weekend. Previously, we did it during the week, so now we're trying it on a weekend as well. We have the advocacy work group coming up, and then our Veterans Event. We held that event last year. It's going to be held this year, May the 20th, at the United Wholesale Mortgage Event, I'm sorry, the United Wholesale Mortgage location in Pontiac. It was a very successful event last year. We had a number of different vendors last year, and we still have quite a few vendors coming again this year. We already know that our registration is up to 75 for this event, so I'm really looking forward to it. It's going to be a highly attended event this year. All right, another couple of things that I wanted to mention is we are, I actually just had a meeting today. We are starting to partner with Oakland County Parks. They have actually a very comprehensive disability program, and we're going to start promoting some of the resources and events and things that they have with Oakland County Parks. They actually have a really great program that is good through 2029, where they can provide individuals with disabilities as well as veterans, they can get a free park pass, so they can get into any Oakland County Park. So we're going to continue to try to promote this and have Oakland County Parks individuals at some of our events so that they can hand those passes out to people as they're at the event. They just have to look at an ID, see if you're Oakland County resident, and then you get a Oakland County Parks Pass, and it's good through 2029. So we're going to start partnering with them and working through some of the, they have some great programs. They, they do like a kayaking program with individuals with disabilities. They do something where they, you may have seen it, where they have that off-roading program, and they can participate in that off-roading program as well. So this, these are some great resources. We learned a little bit about it at the Abilities Awareness Event, so we're continuing to delve into some of those services and some of those activities that are available and partner with them and promote those types of things through our social media, through our constant contact, and making people aware of the community engagement opportunities that are available for individuals with disabilities as well as our veterans. Next slide. These are some press releases that went out this, actually, they've all already gone out this month, is the Blueprint for Preventing Violence, as well as, I'm going to come back to this other one, but the top CEO, top 23 CEOs, it was a CEO publication that Dana was featured in, it's a big spread of Dana, and that is actually available for you to review. It's in the Document Center on Boardable under the press clips, so you're welcome to review that. And also highlighting Autism Awareness Month, that April being Autism Awareness Month. And then I also wanted to mention that the Youth and Family Care Connect, we were finally able to put that press release out. They were ready for us to really start getting the word out about it. So we put that press release out last week, and now we're continuing to promote it with our local media as well as trying to tap into some of our national media. So we're hoping to get some interviews because this is kind of the first of its kind, it's a very unique initiative, and we're hoping to get some recognition both locally and nationally for this. And that press release is also available for you to, all the, all the press releases are available for you to review in your Document Center on Boardable. Those are all the activities and meetings and things that are coming up, so it's getting busier and busier. And if there, if you have any questions about that. If not, I would like to call Christine up. She wanted to do a quick little overview of some of our, our OCHN recognitions as well.
Good evening, everyone. I will be quick. I do want to say thank you, Dennis, for challenging us to think out of the box a little bit, and which is really how we became so engaged with the Parks and Rec. And I know we come a lot to you, and in bits and pieces, we talk about the awards we've received, where we document you, them, how you can find them. I do, and I'm very excited to announce that we have been selected as a Great Places to Work by SHRM, which is a Society for HR Management. Just to give you a little bit of perspective because, in context, the average approval rate across the com- um, the average approval rate across the country for an organization our size would be 65%. We received an 87. So we're very excited about that. I know Mr. Young asked me one time, when we're applying for these different awards and certificates, we look at all levels of our staff. So it's not just our executive leadership. We have a member of our staff who was recognized as an Oakland County Executive, 40 under 40. Last year, it was Adam Hamilton. This year, it was Kara Woodliff. With the NAMI's awards coming up, we have nominated Susan Stevens, who is one of our complex case management nurses, and she is amazing. I know, I brought up before that Kalana was featured in Vanguard. Dr. Pozios, of course, was the Speaker-elect for the American Psychiatric Association. He's also been appointed to the Oakland County Prosecutor's Commission. We nominate our staff for Dub Awards, which is, which is part of ARC. And, and just to put that in perspective, why we spend a lot of time working closely with our community partners and with our HR team to showcase and highlight not just the organization, but our staff, it is part of our branding work plan. So there is identity branding, there is association branding. So people may just know your name, but we want people to know our name and who we are. And they make that association with our service, array of services, so people know where to get help. The other side of that is usually after something where we've been in a newspaper, we've been in an article, or one of our staff members has been highlighted, then we are asked to come and do presentations, or we are asked to offer our input through, um, interviews about people with mental illness, or substance use, or veterans program. So it really is part of a plan to broaden awareness, and we do vet where we're going to apply. So, you know, and Mr. Young knows, we get, we might get 10 or 15 a day. They say nominate your staff here, nominate your staff there. We take our time to look at the audience, how will it impact our plan? How will it impact our community and the people we serve? So where we are placing our name into and submission for an application is with intent, and it's thoughtful in doing so. So, but this one, we're very excited about that we, um, will be given a coach who operationally will assist us in, here are our areas of strength, here's where we think you can do to help and improve with improvement. So, um, that's always a benefit for us and our staff. I'm excited about it. Any questions, John Paul?
Um, so, uh, for that Great Places to Work, so then how do they determine that? Is, do they ask you questions, interviews, what?
Uh, there are, and it's very similar to other things, too. So Detroit Free Press, they have, you know, Great Places to Work, Crain's has cool, cool places to work. Everybody, we usually apply for those, depending on where we are. We don't want to over-apply. It is a third-party survey, so our staff leadership is not involved at all. There's a third party that comes in. They have comprehensive questions about, um, engagement, trust, just different areas that you would want to see where your staff morale would be positive. And they implement the survey, they collect the data, they analyze the data, they really keep it separate from us so that it's more authentic, which is, which is important. It should be done like that.
And you said something about they give us a coach or something?
Yeah, and this one, we get a coach. So different, different awards come with different benefits. Some come with, hey, you can put this on, you're just on your signature line. This is, and it's also very important for helping for staff recruitment. People do pay attention to what's on your signature line, because I had something on my signature line, and someone said, you didn't change that to 988 yet. And I said, I did not, thank you. So it is also, um, not only, not only for the people we serve in the community, but in this time where we know there's a staff shortage, we really want people to look at our credentials and our credibility as an organization and say, that looks like a place I want to apply.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Um, next on the agenda, is that you, Ms. Sheila?
So just really quick for the CEO evaluation members. Um, we just need to set a next meeting date, preferably before the next board meeting. So, um, I think President Mr. Cowan, and Mr. Torres, and Mr. Furman. Um, if we can set a meeting date prior to us leaving today, that'd be ideal. Um, I'll defer to you, Mr. Torres, on doing an hour, half hour?
Yeah, I think, um, I think we should set an hour, really. Um, I think one of the, the things that, um, for me is important is that, uh, we set enough time to make sure that we're thorough, and that we can discuss things. If it only lasts 20 minutes, then that's great, but
Right.
if should it go over, um, you know, then, um, we have that time. I think an hour is usually a, you know, a good gauge of time that we can have enough discussion, but not way too much either, so. Um, but maybe, uh, the committee members can get together after the closed session and
Yeah.
and talk, and, um, we determine a day, because I know there's some time sensitivity to it.
Right.
that we're, we're running into, and we want to make sure that we're able to meet and then be able to give a recommendation to the board.
Okay. And then, one other thing, just keep in mind for next board meeting, we, I will be seeking who would like to attend the summer conference for CMHA. So those dates are coming up. I'll put it in Boardable on the dates. Um, just keep in mind that I'll be seeking that information for next, at the board meeting.
Mr. Hackens?
Janar Hackens, Corporate Counsel. Um, we're seeking a motion to enter into a closed session today. Um, and I believe the actual, the citation on the screen is wrong. It should be under 15.2681H, uh, which would allow us to discuss attorney-client privilege matters. And we're, so we'd be looking for a motion to go into closed session.
It is on the agenda, correct?
So you need a motion, correct? So I would make that motion to go into closed session.
Support.
They had a roll call.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, yes, I support.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah.
No, it was Mr. Torres and Mr. Young, right?
Oh, the young, yeah. And then we just need to vote on it, so you need a roll call.
Right.
Mr. Furman?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Cowan?
Yes.
Ms. Woodruff?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Torres?
Yes.
Motion carries. Um, yep, so we got to log out of this meeting?